All right, let's call the regular Glencoe Village Board Meeting for Thursday, August 15th, 2024 to order and have a roll call please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Here.
Trustee Listener?
Here.
Trustee Mielopolis? Trustee Underdonk?
Here.
Trustee Rubin?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
And President Rowan?
Here. We are live streaming.
Aye.
Item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board regarding non-agenda items. That means not listed on the some other place on the agenda. If you'd like to speak about a matter that is listed on the agenda, we'll ask that you wait until the agenda item is called and we'll give you an opportunity to speak then. If your matter is on the consent agenda, please let us know if you'd like to talk about that. We'll remove it from the consent agenda so that you can speak about it. Anyone desiring to speak should fill out a written speaker form which is located in the back of the boardroom and then give it to the village manager. This public comment on agenda items is intended as an opportunity for you to make comments to the village board. We'll listen to everything you have to say, but this is not ordinarily a time for discussion or engagement by the board. If appropriate, we may direct the village manager or other village staff to respond to questions or issues raised at a later date. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. To be fair to all, we'll strictly enforce this rule and per our established policy, we'll limit all public comment to a total of thirty minutes. We ask that all speakers be respectful, civil, and non-repetitive, and we ask that all members of the audience refrain from applauding or making any other comments during or after any speaker. So, is there anyone in the audience that wants to discuss a non-agenda item? Okay. Next item on the agenda is reports of committees. Normally, there's a report from me on the committee of the whole. It's going to be my best report. We did not have a committee of the whole meeting, so there's nothing to say. Next item is the finance committee, which we just had. Trustee Rubin, can you report on that? Thanks for that report. The next report is the plan commission, and trustee Listener is our representative on the plan commission.
Yes, thank you very much. We did not have a meeting in late July, but had had an earlier open house at Ryder's Theater for the community where we were presenting the draft comprehensive plan. We're continuing to work through that plan based upon the feedback that we got from the community. We are meeting again next week, and then we'll be scheduling a hearing for the community where we will be presenting the comprehensive plan. So that would be early this fall following that hearing. It'll move on to the village board for final review and adoption. So more to report next month.
Okay, thanks very much. Iffy, excellent. And the next report is the golf advisory committee, and our representative on that is trustee Hallwax.
Thank you. July was another wonderful month for golf. Despite average rainfall, the revenues surpassed budget by eighteen percent, and the details on that, we hit our budget largely because of hitting a maximum capacity of over three hundred golfers for fourteen days out of the month. And rounds exceeded the budget with eight thousand rounds played and averaging over the month two hundred and sixty golfers per day. There was an event called Play for Pink, and that raised seventy-five hundred dollars for breast cancer research, and the clubhouse project continues to progress. And we had a page turn that took place to review the ninety percent construction documents. Staff's in the process of reviewing plans with the Forest Preserve of Cook County. And our next meeting is on Monday, August nineteenth at the golf course.
Okay, thanks for that. Our next report is the sustainability task force. Trustee Mielopolis often gives that report, but she's in Greece, so we're going to have our management analyst Jeff Motsley do the report. Welcome, Jeff. Thanks very much. The next report is the council for inclusion in community, and our representative on that is trustee Scott.
Thank you. The GCIC met on Monday, August fifth at five-thirty. In reviewing subcommittee updates, it was announced that Honey Butter Fried Chicken, as part of their regularly scheduled Thursday night trivia, will be accommodating the GCIC on Thursday, August twenty-second. The trivia begins at seven PM, and the council is encouraging neighbors to arrive early to eat, mingle, and converse with other trivia enthusiasts. The communications committee reviewed a twelve-month schedule of social media posts that tie back to nationalities and ethnicities included in the District Thirty-Five survey. They coordinate with the village's social media calendar and seek to include consistent messaging, including using the Glencoe Welcomes logo and hashtag. They do not include explicitly religious holidays or posts that could be construed as political. The next council meeting will be on Monday, September ninth at five-thirty PM.
Thanks for that report. The next report is the preservation commission, and I'll ask trustee Underdonk to report on that.
The August preservation commission meeting is scheduled for August sixth, but rescheduled to August twenty-seventh. That meeting is subject to appropriateness when we consider for renovations, the home renovation, the eighty states land. The proposed renovation is for updating the infrastructure as well as portions of the interior and roof. This review is unique to that property in that portions of the structure on the public piece are covered in the current preservation. Change must be approved by the board. Again, the next meeting will begin August twenty-seventh, and that's my report for the evaluation.
Okay, stay right there. Next report is the tree commission. Still trustee Underdonk.
The tree commission's been busy. The tree commission met on August fourth. The chair reported that the village had received requests for information-consuming tree preservation on the rural estate in southern Boone town. I understand that the tree survey was recently updated and is under review by village staff. Also, we found that the damage from the cicada invasion was on par with less than anticipated and the village's tree planting will resume this fall. The commission provided input into the upcoming comprehensive plan, which is reflected in several policy statements. The acceptable tree planting list that's submitted in our list recommendations for the preservation and care of trees, it is under the vulnerability by staff and will ultimately be presented to the village board. I think we'll probably need the board, the home management board gets to do it for itself. The other thing that they talked about were opportunities to promote tree health and preservation with the sustainability commission and some of their recommendations, the library, some of their events, and the park district. Finally, elements of a potential block form removal program that stress including guidelines for education and possible subsidies. The specific meeting in October is projected to be released about October six and then to work on some locations. That's my report.
All right, thanks very much. That concludes the reports of committee. The next item on the agenda is reports of officers, and first, the village manager's report.
Thank you, President Rowan. Good evening, everyone. Just a few items on my report this evening. I wanted to start with an update on our community investment program. It is August, which means summer is blowing past us quite quickly. There are a number of our CIP projects that are underway. I've asked our public works director, Monica Sarna, who is back with us full-time again after the birth of her second son, and has jumped in with both feet and has a comprehensive update for everybody this evening about all of the work that is going on in town. So Monica, please, and welcome back.
The project that was scoped for this year is Whole Felder from Sunset to Dundee and also the north and south segments of Scopi Ridge, north and south of Dundee. The approval for that project is on tonight's agenda. We'll be meeting with the awarded contractor, DeMeo Brothers, early next week to finalize the schedule, but we anticipate the majority of that will happen in September. We'll also be coordinating with the school to make sure that any traffic impacts are coordinated and no school routes will be disrupted. And then our various MPI projects are ramping up, so you'll be seeing pavement striping take place in the next two to three weeks. We're finalizing our sidewalk replacement scope in Area Three, which is the south part of the town, and we anticipate that that sidewalk replacement work will take place in September. We're also doing pavement rejuvenation this year. That is new work for us, and we're anticipating that that will take place in September as well on Vernon Grove and Madison. And then lastly, our pavement patching for the year is still being scoped, and that will likely occur sometime in October. We have quite a bit of engineering design that is ongoing throughout the year. That's to help us prepare for our future CIP planning. That includes our pavement assessment and our ADA transition plan, and also one of the projects under design, which is the Green Bay Trail and Sheridan sidewalk project. We recently received award, notice of award for grant funding through Invest in Cook of a hundred thousand dollars. It's very exciting. I also wanted to touch on Forest Edge subdivision, just give you an update on that. The site development permits have been issued and masquerading is underway. They've also started the installation of public utilities. So some of the public utilities will impact the residents of Carroll Lane due to utility connects. Those residents have been notified. We have, you know, the site is being monitored on a daily basis by our consultant, ERA, as well as our village engineer, just making sure that the site is being well-maintained and that we have the proper tree protection out there as well. We got a lot of questions from our residents about the project, and we've been coordinating with neighbors as well, but the project's going to be going well. With that, I will take any questions.
Thanks, Monica. Lots going on, and, you know, special thanks to James Teague, our village engineer, who really is able to juggle an immense amount. I think our stormwater project at the south end of town, which is, I think, probably in scale, one of the largest stormwater projects we've ever undertaken, is despite the wet weather progressing very well. I got a comment, I was at the Chamber of Commerce board meeting this week, I got a comment from two members of that board who live on Jackson, saying, "We can't believe how quickly the project is moving along, and we keep getting great updates from the village." So special thanks to James and the team for that and keeping that project moving ahead. There will be some impacts once school gets underway, but we're working really hard to minimize that. I wanted to also just make mention that we are in the process with another large-scale CIP project that was planned to get underway this year. We're finalizing the plans for the renovation of much of the second floor of village hall. That includes the day room facilities, sleeping quarters, and locker rooms for the public safety department. Nearly all of that space is original to this nineteen fifty-six building and has well-outlived its useful life. We're working with our architects. We've had several meetings just this week to try to finalize those plans, get those plans out on the street. As a component of that project is also an update and renovation of the space that we are in right now, the village council chambers. My sense is that we will be bringing a recommendation to the board in October relative to that project, and it will get started hopefully still that month. What it means, though, is that we will not be utilizing this space for these meetings. I believe the September board meeting is likely our last one in this space. The council chambers will actually serve as temporary sleeping quarters and temporary rudimentary locker rooms for the public safety department while we go through this project. And so there will be actually temporary walls that are going to be constructed in here to accommodate that, trying to darken the space as much as we can so that it's actually effective for our officers when they are working on twenty-four-hour shifts or when they are here for multiple days. So that process, as I said, will get underway in October. What does that mean for meetings? I'm very grateful that our friends at the library and at the park district have extended their hospitality and that we will likely be utilizing the take-of-center almost exclusively for the village board meetings. We will be also likely using the take-of-center for plan commission and zoning board of appeals meetings. All of those bodies typically meet in this room. The library has also indicated they'd be happy to help us with some of our other boards and commissions if we have overflow space needs. So everybody's working together, which we appreciate. But as I said, you will see on your coming agendas those contracts to get that project this project underway. We've been planning to do it really since before the pandemic, and I think there's a lot of anticipation, positive anticipation, especially for the public safety spaces, to see those get renovated and be just much more effective and useful for our teams as they are in this space. So I wanted to make sure to mention that. We've kind of mentioned it as an aside, but school actually is starting in a little less than a couple of weeks here in Glencoe. School starts Tuesday, August twenty-seventh. As always, the public safety department works closely with our community partners in District Thirty-Five to prepare as students are going to be returning to school. So this is a good reminder with school coming back in session. School buses are again going to be driving through the community. Kids are going to be waiting for those buses. They're going to be walking and riding bikes to school either by themselves or with their families, utilizing streets and sidewalks to do that. Please keep an eye out for those students and their families. Remember to slow down all through our residential neighborhoods. This is something that we work very closely with a lot of our neighborhoods on. We've had a lot of conversations about things like stop signs and crosswalks and improving those to make sure they're visible. As Monica mentioned, that's one of the efforts that'll be taking place in the next few weeks in terms of refreshing some of our pavement markings. But it's just a good reminder that we've got a lot of kiddos out there who are going to be excited to be back in school. That excitement may also mean they don't always stop at intersections in the way that they should, so let's keep an extra eye out for them. And I only say that because I have a third grader and first grader who are also very excited and sometimes run a little bit faster than I'm ready for them to. So just something to be mindful of. We did receive a notice from the Union Pacific Railroad about railroad tie replacements. This is something that has happened intermittently for the last couple of years. This is actually overnight work. We are anticipating that is going to get started in a portion of Glencoe. They are working on both sets of tracks that run through town. I'm grateful to say that in the last few years that this work has actually taken place. We haven't gotten complaints from the community. It's actually relatively quiet work considering the fact that it's being done in the middle of the night, but that's being done to facilitate train schedules during the day. And that we expect that work will be going on between August twenty-second and October third, not every night, not in the same locations throughout town, but kind of moving through the community during that timeframe. So we'll have information up on our website and get that out in e-news as well. And then last but not least, Labor Day is September second. That means village hall is closed, and Monday garbage and recycling collections wait till Tuesday. Actually, Tuesday, we'll wait till Wednesday as well. So if you're a Monday or Tuesday, if you're on the schedule for Monday or Tuesday, you'll wait one day that week. And that's all I have unless there are any questions.
Thanks very much for that report. The next report is the village president's report. That's me. First item is a proclamation celebrating the one-hundred-and-fortieth anniversary of the Saint Paul AME Church. The resolution, the proclamation rather, has been circulated to the board. It's been published online. Unless there are anyone who wants to speak on this, is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion concerning Saint Paul AME is approved. The second item on the agenda is a resolution honoring the community service officer Catherine Sweeney for her thirty-six years of service to the village of Glencoe. Let me say, we are very gr- she's not here. So, but we are very grateful for the dedicated service that Katie Sweeney has provided for the past thirty-six years. No one will be able to replace her, especially the care she provided to animals of all kinds in Glencoe. In preparation for her well-deserved retirement, she spent many hours over the last several months refining operating procedures and training our public safety team so they're going to be able to step in to provide the animal control services that she had provided even though she won't be here. We are, we wish Katie the best in her retirement. The resolution has been circulated to the board. It's been made available online to our residents unless there are additional comments. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that have been published online for the community and reviewed by board members individually or together as part of our committee of the whole. We don't think they warrant any further public discussion, but I would like to note that items G and H are both intergovernmental agreements that underscore our commitment to seeking ways not only to save money and time, but to build and maintain relationships with our partner governments. We all do better if we work together and are committed to that effort. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved and seconded. We need a roll call on this.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listener?
Yes.
Trustee Underdonk?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
The consent agenda is approved. Okay, the next item on our agenda is regular business, and there are two items of regular business concerning home rule. The first one is consideration of a resolution initiating submission of a public question to grant home rule status to the village of Glencoe. I'll note that the second one is a resolution concerning our intention as the board of trustees regarding the use of home rule taxing authority and PTIL. Let's start with the first one, and I'll ask our deputy village manager and CFO, Nikki Larson, to present about home rule.
Good evening. Included in the packet this evening is a resolution for your consideration to place a referendum question on the November ballot, which will ask residents of Glencoe to consider home rule governance. Since the passage of the Illinois Constitution in nineteen seventy, Illinois communities are either home rule or non-home rule. Communities with a population of twenty-five thousand or more were granted automatic home rule status, while communities with less than twenty-five thousand residents may only become home rule through a referendum. While non-home rule communities are subject to state and county mandates, home rule communities are often able to govern local issues themselves. As the map on the screen outlines, among our neighboring communities in and around the North Shore, only Glencoe and Connelworth remain non-home rule communities. Through research conducted in twenty eighteen through twenty twenty, the village's non-home rule status has posed several challenges, particularly due to state and county mandates over the past five years. The village board, as part of the twenty eighteen strategic plan, identified the need to explore home rule to help alleviate these challenges. Some of these challenges included being subject to state mandates, lack of flexibility to enact local ordinances that residents have requested, limited ability to pay for certain critical infrastructure for periods over twenty years, and limited tools to seek to reduce the village's reliance on property taxes. In twenty twenty twenty, a referendum on home rule was the village's reliance on property taxes. In 2020, a referendum on Home Rule was discussed at length and was considered, but then subsequently postponed by the Village Board due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This year, the Board revisited the issue, and it again considered presenting the question to the community as a referendum question on the ballot this November. Based on the research that was done by staff, the Village Board discussed the potential benefits of Home Rule governance, which include flexibility to govern locally. This includes providing local authority to consider enacting local regulations that impact our residents, or to seek to not adopt regulations set forth by the state of Illinois or Cook County. Today, Glencoe is subject to the state statute as well as county ordinances, with little ability to opt out or challenge such mandates. There are also financial advantages, including the ability to strengthen the village's multi-year contracts to achieve long-term cost savings, and to explore opportunities to reduce the reliance on property taxes. Home Rule governance could also enhance the village's ability to offer competitive public safety officer recruitment and retention efforts, maintain the village's AAA credit rating, and create additional flexibility, as President Rowan stated earlier, in managing debt related to local infrastructure projects. Lastly, our research has shown that Home Rule governance can also help support a stronger and more vibrant local business environment. Although Home Rule authority does not provide a solution to every problem that the village may encounter, it does accommodate options that the Village Board can consider to address the needs of the community. Under state law, referendum questions must be approved by the Village Board no later than 79 days before a local election. The resolution on the agenda includes the proposed question, which has been set by statute: Shall the Village of Glencoe become a Home Rule unit? If the Board approves the resolution on the agenda this evening, this item will be placed on the November 5th general election ballot to be considered by Glencoe voters. And the Village Attorney and I are happy to answer any questions that the Board may have on this matter.
So, thanks for that report. Before the Board engages, I think what I'd like to do is see if there's any public comment on Home Rule. We don't have a big crowd tonight. We did have a number of meetings where there was a pretty big crowd filled up this room to talk about Home Rule. Not so much tonight. But if there's any public comment on Home Rule, I would invite that now, and the caveat is only we're still applying the three-minute and 30-minute rules. So, is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the Board about the Home Rule referendum we're going to vote on? Oh, I don't hear anybody. Okay, and that's fine. Like I said, we've held a number of forums in this room, and we heard from lots of folks. Before questions for... that anyone might have, maybe it's time for me to, you know, say what I think about this. Which, by the way, is not a surprise because I've said it before, and I said it in the Home Rule meetings that the village had. I want to thank all the residents who came to our prior forums on Home Rule, and who contacted the Village Board, often by writing to us concerning Home Rule. Having considered all of that, having considered what the Village staff has looked at and presented to us, I want to say that I urge the Village Board to authorize the referendum, and I hope our residents will vote in favor of Home Rule, which I think is the right and smart move for our village. First, Home Rule gives the village and village residents, rather than the state or county government, control over village affairs. At the village's last Home Rule forum on Monday, one of the opponents of Home Rule inadvertently gave a good example of why I think we need Home Rule. He noted that the state legislature, at the behest of the governor, recently eliminated the grocery tax, which results in a loss of revenue for Glencoe. And he complained that the village should have done more, a better job of lobbying the legislature so they wouldn't do that. Well, the village did lobby the legislature, as did the Illinois Municipal League and the Northwest Municipal Conference, which represent municipalities like us. But in the real world, Glencoe is a blip in the state of Illinois, and we can't control what the state legislature does. What Glencoe residents can control is the Glencoe Village Board. I'm for Home Rule, and I think the Glencoe residents should be for Home Rule, because Home Rule would give our residents, rather than the county or the state, control over us. Second, I'm for Home Rule, because it will give the village a chance to find revenue sources beyond the property tax. As a non-Home Rule government, our primary source of revenue is property tax. And one big problem with the property tax is that our residents, that's you and me, we pay all of it. As a non-Home Rule government, our ability to look to other sources of revenue is very limited. On the other hand, with Home Rule, the village could consider imposing different taxes, such as the sales tax, that would be paid in part at least by visitors and non-residents. Our neighboring communities, which are Home Rule, are able to consider those alternatives. We can't, because we're not Home Rule, and that costs our residents. The third reason I'm for Home Rule is that non-Home Rule governments are limited to 20-year bonds, whereas Home Rule governments are not. This difference costs current Glencoe residents. And unless we fix this now, it will cost us a lot more going forward. Here's why. Glencoe uses municipal bonds to pay for our long-term assets, our infrastructure. Some of our assets and infrastructure, such as streets, can last 20 years, excuse me, 20 years, and 20-year bonds are appropriate for them. But water and stormwater infrastructure lasts way longer than 20 years, 40 years, 50 years, perhaps longer. Our water plant on the beach is about 100 years old. So here's the problem. Best case, the Village of Glencoe is looking at spending many tens of millions of dollars to upgrade our water plant and our water infrastructure. These will be very long-term assets that will last much longer than 20 years. A Home Rule government can issue longer-term bonds that better match the life of the asset. But as a non-Home Rule government, we'll have to pay for our water infrastructure, which should last decades longer than 20 years with 20-year bonds. That means if we're able to pay for our infrastructure at all, our current residents will be forced to pay the entire cost of the asset in the first 20 years, and the person that buys your house gets the water infrastructure for free. In last Monday's Home Rule meeting, one of our residents, Joel Solomon, explained this with a clear and simple analogy. He pointed out that as any homeowner knows, if you have a 30-year mortgage, your house payments will be way less than if you have a 10-year mortgage. And this analogy applies to our water infrastructure. Without Home Rule, our current residents will have to pay more, way more, than they should have to pay. So here's a hypothetical example, but it's based on some facts. Winnetka, our Home Rule next-door neighbor, is spending about $85 million on a very large stormwater project. So as an illustration, let's imagine an $85 million water project in Glencoe. If a project that size were financed with 20-year bonds, as we would be required to do now when we're not Home Rule, rather than 40-year bonds, which is the length of a federal water loan, 40 years, a typical Glencoe homeowner with a $20,000 annual property tax bill would pay an additional $800 every year. I'm for Home Rule, because I don't think Glencoe residents should have to pay that extra amount. I don't think Glencoe residents want to pay that extra amount. Home Rule is the only way we can avoid paying extra for the infrastructure that we need. There is some opposition to Home Rule in Glencoe, and we take that opposition seriously. The Trade Association, representing real estate brokers, is organizing against Home Rule, and I've received more than a dozen identical form emails from residents and some non-residents that appear to be attributable to the Real Estate Brokers Association. They're absolutely entitled to do this. We're happy to hear from them. The real estate broker's email says that Home Rule guarantees higher property taxes, more debt, and more red tape. But let me say in response, that's just not true. The experience of our Home Rule neighbors, and that means virtually all of our neighboring communities, simply does not support that charge. To the contrary, as I've already explained, not being Home Rule is costing our residents more, way more. The real estate broker's form email says that we should keep Glencoe special, and the way we can do that is by rejecting Home Rule. But not being Home Rule is not responsible for anything positive in Glencoe, not one thing. Yes, we're different, because we're not Home Rule, but only because we have less control of our destiny, and our residents get to pay extra. I don't think our residents want to be different in that way. Opponents of Home Rule say that they fear the village government will go crazy, spending wildly, taxing wildly unconstrained. And that's a theory, I suppose. But at this point, virtually all of our neighbors have chosen to be Home Rule or are Home Rule, and none of them has gone crazy, not one. What protections would Glencoe have if it were Home Rule? The same protections that all of our neighbors have, democracy. Majority of the Board turns over every two years. And I ask, which government is more responsive to you, the state, the county, or the village? I think we all know the answer to that, and it isn't the state or the county. So on the one hand, there's a theory that armed with Home Rule, the village will go crazy. But that hasn't happened with any of our neighbors. On the other hand, the village is looking at making massive, necessary infrastructure improvements, and it is a certainty that absent Home Rule, you will be forced to pay way more for those than you should. Or worse, the village won't be able to afford to make all those infrastructure investments. And I would say to our residents and the real estate brokers, if you're concerned about property values, and we all are, what do you think the property in Glencoe would be worth if our water infrastructure were suspect because we couldn't afford to make the improvements? All right, that's my... I said brief statement. It's not as brief as maybe we all hoped, of why I'm for Home Rule, and why I think Home Rule is the right and smart move for Glencoe. So I urge the Village Board to put the Home Rule referendum on the ballot in November, and I urge our residents to vote for Home Rule. One final point, we propose to put the Home Rule referendum on the ballot this November on a national election day. Our friends at the Park District also have a bond referendum on the ballot in November. Some have expressed concern about having two Glencoe-related referenda at the same time, fearing that our voters will be confused, or that the referenda will somehow cancel each other out. I think our residents are smart. I think we'll recognize that the two referenda present completely different issues. The Village Board is considering putting Home Rule on the November ballot, because we think that this should be decided at a high-turnout election, that that's most appropriate for Home Rule. I'm sure the Park District feels the same way about its bond referendum. The Village Board takes no formal position on the Park District's bond referendum. Personally, I'm pro-Glencoe, and I'm going to be voting for both. All right, thanks. You've heard enough from me. We didn't hear from anyone in the audience yet, but are there additional comments or questions from the Board before we vote? Trustee Underdunk?
I view Home Rule as not being all about money. It's about local access to new resources, and also additional control over what we have. In my role as a trustee, people often ask me, well, why can't we do something about X? And that covers a lot of area. Sometimes it's a question related to sustainability, public safety, infrastructure, personnel, economic development, budgeting, and contracting, and there are other areas. So this is more than just a financial question. It's also a management question. Many of our neighbors have looked at this and have adopted Home Rule. And that made me think about another way, a metaphor I could talk about this. As you all know, I'm a big cyclist. And so I thought about this phrase, "We should consider that if this is the time to take the training wheels off the bike."
Thanks very much. Are there other trustees that want to weigh in? Trustee Listner?
Yes. If Glencoe had had a population of 25,000 or more, we wouldn't even be having this conversation today, because we automatically would have been Home Rule. 223 communities in the state of Illinois do have Home Rule status, but Glencoe does not. While 35% of those communities did achieve Home Rule status because of their population meeting that automatic threshold of 25,000, 65% have proactively achieved Home Rule status by referendum. Every single community on the North Shore is a Home Rule community, except Glencoe and one other. All of these communities have been able to benefit from their Home Rule status, and I do believe it's time for our voters in Glencoe to become educated about Home Rule, and about all of its multiple benefits that our neighbors are able to enjoy from Home Rule. I'm in favor of putting it on the November ballot and do hope to see its passage.
Thank you. Trustee Scott?
So I'd like to start by emphasizing that all we are doing this evening is moving the public question of Home Rule status to the ballot for our November election. That's it. After that, the residents will decide. The Board has a not-so-secret agenda, as you've heard tonight. We're asking the residents this question because we think Home Rule is in the best long-term interest of the community. And in fact, that's our job, to dig into local issues of import and make suggestions that the residents either support or deny. Tonight, you've already heard a lot of compelling reasons why Home Rule is in the best long-term interest of Glencoe, and I'm pretty sure we've covered the waterfront. So instead of another list, I'll simply say that passing Home Rule provides your thoughtful, well-managed, fiscally-prudent local government with better options. It gives us more adaptability and empowers us to act swiftly when necessary to secure our infrastructure and make the most efficient use of your capital. We are simply seeking the flexibility that the overwhelming majority of our neighbors already enjoy, and to keep decision-making local.
Thanks very much. Trustee Rubin?
The President of the Board, the Village Trustees, you know, we all have a kind of say, we have a consent agenda and things like that. We actually have a lot of very vibrant conversations on the line, and we absolutely go to agree on everything. This happens with the topic, we seem to agree on a lot of things. So you get a lot of different people from a lot of different points of view that are all very focused and concerned about our community as well. All the reasons that I can get, all those, that 65% of those communities, you know, are what? know, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and thirty communities have all done the same thing and the same reason, it's a good idea, it's a good thing. It really comes down to the, I wonder, there's sort of a particular reason, I bet, real estate seems to train all these other communities. I'm pretty sure people have sounded home, and that's what they're going to say, they're like, oh, they're home. The point is that I wonder if any homeowner in our town bought their home saying, ah, they're not home. Seriously, it's just the smart thing to do on so many levels. And while people probably should talk to me about this issue of walking the dogs or whatever in town, to the president's point, we're all, you know, up for reelection every, after board every two years, but more importantly, we're all available pretty much all the time to the residents and want to talk. And they say, well, what are you thinking wrong? And, you know, we get into the conversation, closing time, and I said, look, I can't tell you your real estate taxes get to go down if you vote for home rule. I was going to tell you that, but I absolutely will tell you the real estate taxes get to go down faster if you don't vote for home rule. And so I just think it's the smart thing to do economically for the residents, and it's the smart thing to do for the ways to manage your livelihood. And I just say, there are concerns, as I've expressed, that if not, we're losing all these other communities that are going to vote for home rule, and I'm not going to lie to you, I go, the part because people come up to you, you're walking the dogs.
Thanks very much. Joe, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just did.
I think the other trustees have summed up the points quite well, so I'll keep it pithy. I think to Trustee Rubin's point, we've extensively discussed this, so the residents know. In my fifth year, we've talked about this topic a lot. And to Trustee Scott's point, we're only asking that we put this on the ballot, and residents are going to have a chance to vote. And so I would encourage residents that may not be as up to speed on the topic as they'd like to be to dig in and to look at the surrounding communities and all the points that have already been made, and they can make their vote in November.
Thanks very much. Before I ask for a motion to approve the resolution, let me just say that one of our trustees, Trustee Michalopoulos, is out of town. She's in Greece, but she sent me a note at which she asked that I read concerning home rule, which is, I am in support of home rule because it provides flexibility for us to handle local issues on our own and gives decision-making power to our residents. Okay, I think we've heard, you heard more than enough from me, but we've heard from all the rest of the trustees. Is there a motion to approve the home rule resolution which conforms to the statutes or requirements for what would be voted on in November?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Liston?
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
The motion carries, so it'll be on the November ballot, home rule. One additional item, which is consideration of a resolution declaring the intention of the Board of Trustees, the Village of Glencoe, regarding the use of home rule taxing authority. And I'll ask Deputy Village Manager and CFO Nikki Larson to present.
Thank you, President Rowan. As the village board just authorized the placement of the home rule referendum on the November ballot, item seven B on the agenda presents a companion item to address the village board's intention regarding limiting home rule authority should it be approved by voters in November. As part of the consideration of home rule governance, it's common for local authorities to consider self-limitations on home rule authority. As the board discussed in May 2024, one such measure is the commitment to adhere to the property tax extension limitation law, which is commonly referred to as PTAL. PTAL increases, limits increases to the property tax levy for non-home rule communities to the lesser of five percent or the annual increase in the Consumer Price Index. If Glencoe becomes a home rule community, the village would gain the ability to explore alternative revenue sources, as we've discussed previously, which could potentially reduce the reliance on property taxes. This could shift part of the tax burden from a resident away from a resident to visitors and non-residents. The village board and trustees are aware of residents' concerns about expanding the village's taxing authority. To address these concerns, the resolution on the agenda this evening would commit to retaining the PTAL limitations should the referendum pass. Following the certification of election results, if the referendum is approved by voters, the village board would enact an ordinance to maintain these limitations consistent with the village's past practices. And I'm happy to answer any questions on this item.
Thanks for that report. In our packet describing this resolution, one of the things that is in there is, I think, since home rule is designed not to increase our property taxes, but we hope to find other sources, we're in favor of self-limiting. And I said to our lawyers, can we do a trigger ordinance, sort of like what was done with abortion in Roe versus Wade, that says, we'll pass the ordinance tonight, and it would say, if the village goes to home rule, then the ordinance would kick in and we would be bound by PTAL. And our lawyers said, we're not home rule, we don't have specific authority to do that, so we actually have to do this two-step process, which is a lot of what we find because we're not home rule, which is all, it's taped together, it's jerry-rigged, we're trying to work around this really sometimes silly limitation. So what we're, as I understand, what we're proposing is we'll pass a resolution telling ourselves that if home rule passes, then we can pass an ordinance that imposes PTAL. So this exercise is another reason that I think we should be home rule.
It's a declaration of legislative intent, you know, very, very important.
Okay. You know, because we can't do what legislatures all over the world can do, which is a trigger ordinance, because that's not specifically allowed for non-residents. Okay, are there any questions or comments for Nikki?
I just wanted to go back to your point, the statement of the intent that people are seeking. And that's what we said.
I didn't mean to belittle it, because I think it is, because legislative bodies, I mean, this is, this is an important statement, this is what you intend to do if given this
Anybody else want to comment? And if not, is there a motion to approve the PTAL resolution?
Motion to approve the PTAL resolution.
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Liston?
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thanks very much, Nikki. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. Is there any other business? All right, I don't see any. So we actually have a closed session tonight, so I'll ask for a motion to move into closed session pursuant to the following section of the Open Meetings Act 2C11 pending litigation. Is there a motion to approve moving to closed session under 2C11?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Liston?
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?